Commissioner Look. Commissioner, Commissioner Brested.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
We're all present and accounted for, and welcome everybody back to the dais. It's good to have everybody together again. First item on your agenda is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brested. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brested.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes. We'll move to item five on your agenda to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending February 25th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brested.
Aye.
That item passes. That brings us to item six on your agenda, which is to approve the minutes from February 22nd, 2022 of our county board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. We have one item today under Chair's remarks, and it's related to an aspect of warmer weather that we don't really want to think about, but must prepare for: mosquitoes. As we make our way out of winter and into spring, managing these pests is on the minds of the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District staff. And I'm thankful they're here to help mitigate the impact of these biting insects in the metro area. Commissioner West, our liaison to the agency, will lead our conversation and introduce our guest from the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm honored to serve as a liaison to the MMCD, the Metropolitan...
Mosquito.
Mosquito.
Control District.
Control District. The district is in, is an essential resource for controlling insects not only irritating, it's a disease spreader. In Minnesota, we have mosquitoes that have spread West Nile disease, both western and eastern equine encephalitis, lacrosse encephalitis, and dog heartworm. These diseases can be deadly and have debilitating effects on humans and animals. So it's important that the MMCD successfully controls mosquitoes in our area during each stage of their lives. MMCD staff work hard to reduce the risk to the mosquito-borne disease through various measures, and they provide education to the public about steps that they can take to combat the seasonal pest. And it is a pest. Now, let me introduce Dr. Stephen Manwiler. He's the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District to tell us more about their work, priorities for the upcoming seasons, and any trends that they've been seeing in the mosquito population. Dr. Manwiler, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner West, thank you for the warm welcome, commissioners. That introduction actually went through part of my presentation, so I'll be able to go more quickly through the earlier part. But I thought today I would talk to you a little bit about district services. Yes, we're the mosquito control district, but we provide some services in addition to simply mosquito control. If you understand the mosquito life cycle, our control and operations make a lot more sense because there's multiple layers to the management program. Again, I'll review the other services, then briefly touch on last year, what happened last year, and look a little bit at our financial history and a long-term plan we have because that leads into our plans for 2022. And 2022 is looking like a pretty good year for us and for everybody. Given events that are going on in the world right now, I think we do need some positive news, and I've got a good story to tell today. We offer comprehensive mosquito control, and it's really, you could call it mosquito management because it's multiple layers. And it involves finding the mosquitoes, knowing where different mosquitoes are and when, and then how to be able to mitigate those mosquitoes. Mosquito-borne disease is a big part of this program. We mentioned it separately, but it's really not separate. There are a lot of mosquitoes that can be both vectors and pestiferous. Public education is a big part of our program because everybody, all of us, have the power to take actions that can make the situation better by working together. Again, when you're looking at a multi-layered program, it just makes the whole outcome better and more effective. We also offer tick-borne disease surveillance. We were mandated to offer tick-borne, or tick control. There is no cost-effective method of tick control available. So how we meet that mandate is to basically conduct surveillance throughout the season, evaluate the risk each week during the season, and let the public know when the risk is higher, what the particular risks are, and how they can protect themselves. And then finally, we control biting nets that come out of small streams and the rivers. If you understand the mosquito life cycle, the program makes a lot more sense. The life cycle is really very similar to that of a butterfly. It's called complete metamorphosis, but they start out as an egg that's either laid in moist soil or laid on the water, depending on the mosquito species. The egg hatches into a larva, which is in the water. The larval goes through four stages called instars. Then it turns into a pupa, which is also in the water. The pupa is analogous to a chrysalis for a butterfly. After a day or two, the pupa comes to the surface of the water. The adult mosquito comes out of the pupa, flies away, rests for a day or two. Then the female goes off to take her blood meal. That's when she's, the pestiferous part of it starts, and also when the disease vectoring part of it starts. But mosquitoes need a blood meal. The females need a blood meal to develop eggs and then begin the next generation. The take-home message from this slide is there are lots of different mosquito species that we deal with in this area, and each one has its own biology. That biology is factored into the program, so the program has various sections that deal with it. You don't need to remember the names. Let us remember the names. Commissioner West did a great job going through all the full names of the various mosquito-borne diseases. You'll notice in the lower left, we're using three-letter abbreviations because they're a lot easier to remember and a lot easier to pronounce. But again, the take-home message is we have different vectors with different diseases with different biologies, and the program is designed to deal with all of them. This slide has a similar take-home message. You'll notice lots of different kinds of wetlands, either on the left or the center, natural wetlands, or on the right, human-created wetlands. Mosquitoes are pretty adept at using anything that's out there to be able to develop. Larval control is our mainstay. When they're in the water, they can't get away from you. We use primarily biological control. It's called BTI, and it's on corn cob, but it's a bacterium that is specific to mosquitoes and other similar flies, and it doesn't hurt anything else. It's a cost-effective material for us. It does its job, it disappears. It's, most of the time when you see helicopters out treating, BTI is what they're putting out into the sites. We use a couple of other larval control agents as well in lesser amounts, and they also are biologicals. Adult control is another layer. Larval control won't eradicate the mosquitoes, but in most cases, it reduces the mosquitoes to levels that are low enough that everybody can go about their lives and not be bothered too much. On the other hand, sometimes there are local areas where that's not the case. Adult control can deal with that. Most people are more familiar with adult control than larval control. Everybody's used to seeing somebody with a spray mount, like the upper-right picture, which is, there are two kinds of adult control. One deals with finding the places where the mosquitoes rest and treating those places. Those are normally very small-scale treatments. It's called a backpack treatment. And then in the lower right, you can see a truck-mounted treatment. That uses a special sprayer that puts out a very small amount of pesticide. It comes out to one and a half ounces per acre, and the active in that is about 1/10,000th of a pound per acre. And that's enough to control the mosquitoes for a short period of time, but not enough to impact much of anything else. This is an example of public outreach that's available through our website. Anybody who lives in the district can go to our website and select a mapping feature. This isn't the first page of the website. You select a mapping feature. It pulls up a dialog. You put in your address, and it'll pull up a map like this that shows all the wetlands around your address. And if you click on all those wetlands, it'll show you what work we've done there. So if you want to try it, go ahead. If you live outside the district, it won't work for you, obviously. But if you live inside the district and you just, say you saw the helicopters south of your house, and you want to see what was going on, you can dial this thing up, click on wetlands south of your house, and it'll tell you. I mentioned tick-borne disease. We evaluate the risk of tick-borne disease by trapping rodents and removing the ticks from the rodents. The developmental stage of the tick tells us, because we know the tick life cycle and which stages are most likely to be infected with a pathogen, being able to find those on the rodents helps us figure out, okay, this is a time where we really need to tell people, when you're out and about, be sure to check yourself, be sure to wear a long-sleeved shirt, long-sleeved pants, tuck your trousers in your socks, things like that to help protect yourself. And you can lower your risk quite a bit by doing things like that. Black fly or biting net control is conducted early in the season in small streams, and then beginning in May through the rest of the season in the large rivers. These are also blood-sucking flies. Their biology is sort of like mosquitoes, and taxonomically, they're related to mosquitoes, which is why BTI in a different formulation also controls the larvae of black flies. But actually, looking at mosquitoes and black flies, I think these things are more pestiferous. They get around, they'll bite the back of your head, they're pretty bad, pretty nasty. On the other hand, the BTI works extremely well. Anybody here who's a golfer has probably experienced these things in the summertime when, all at once, you've got little kamikaze flies buzzing in your head, and they crash into your head. Those are black flies. Everybody here is aware that last year was really dry. In fact, it was one of the driest, lowest precipitation years since 1989. And that meant that our service demand, at least for larval control, was a lot lower. If you look at the numbers on, in the bottom part of this slide, it's really the differences between them. If you look at the top row of numbers, which are acres of larval control, and the leftmost year is 2016, you'll notice little over 300,000 acres. If you slide all the way to the right, which is last year, you'll notice 150,000 acres. So the difference between extremely wet and extremely dry can be that great for the district. The adult control was also an awful lot lower in 2021, 2,500 acres worth compared to 82,000 acres worth in 2016. Most of that was because in 2021, we did a few backpack treatments. We did almost nothing with trucks in 2021. We didn't need to. The surveillance showed that there weren't very many mosquitoes around. Most of the adult control was for, in response to disease vectors, and it was local. The other big issue in 2021, as well as 2020, was the impact of the COVID pandemic on our ability to hire seasonal employees. Because of the COVID pandemic, we can only have one employee per truck. And in previous years, you'll see 2016 through 2019, we'd hire 230 to 240. You get to 2020 and 2021, it's down quite a bit, and it'll be the same this year. It looks like, given the way the pandemic seems to be unfolding now, next year, we may be able to get closer again to 240. We were fortunate that last year and the year before were relatively dry. In 2020, we had about a two-week delay to hire employees because of, well, we had to revamp our training. It's hands-on training, and you couldn't do that with COVID, so we had to make it all remote. And then we had to space out people so you could do it in small groups. And we learned in 2020 how to do it, so it didn't impact 2021 as well. It actually turns out, there's some aspects of the remote training that now, when we mix it back with some hands-on, is going to be a better set of training than we had before the pandemic. So you get what you can get and learn from what life throws at you. I think these, I want to review these terms because the next few slides refer to them. And although they're not, I'm sure you're going to be not surprised by these. These are terms everybody uses. A budget is a spending plan. Our 2022 budget is about $19.7 million. The levy is the amount of taxes we collect to support the service delivery. You'll notice it's about $19 million, a little less than the budget, and I'll explain a little bit as to why that's the case shortly. We receive half of our levy in July, half in December. We have reserves that support the cash flow and between the levy payments. The reserves can fluctuate year to year. When you think back to 300,000 acres of larval control in 2016 versus 150,000 in 2021, and variation in between, the reserves help us deal with that and still be able to provide the required services. Finally, we have a fund balance policy, which is an equation that basically tells us, if your budget for the next year is X, and you have so much in inventory, and there's two or three other things that go into it, this is the minimum amount you're going to need in your reserves to be able to support cash flow. So moving to how 2022 compares to 2021, our maximum levy in 2022 went up 6%. That's the top set of numbers. The row before that is the amount we actually levy. We levy less than the max for multiple reasons, but the most important is we levy enough to provide the services, and we work with our commission to figure what service levels are necessary, and that's the levy that we recommend. We also levy well before, below the maximum because the maximum can fluctuate. The economic times in 2020 and 2021 and early 2022 are pretty good. You can see that the max levy went up 6%. Well, in 2008, the max levy went down 6%. Everybody remembers the financial crash then. In other words, the max levy varies. So if we stay well below that, then we don't have a major impact to the control program. If you go down to the numbers that are second from the bottom, the row second from the bottom, you'll see the amount of our total levy that comes from Anoka County. We don't choose that amount. The Department of Revenue indicates that, and I'm assuming what they do is use relative property valuations throughout the whole seven-county metro area to decide, once our commission approves a total levy, how it's partitioned out amongst the counties. Finally, our budget went up 1%, and that's mainly cost of living we've been done. We do our best to get as much as we can out of every dollar that we receive. To fully understand the impact of how 2022 is unfolding and why it's such a good story for us, I'd like to briefly review the last few years of finances at the district. In the slide, looking at larval control between 2016 and 2021, you saw 300,000 acres of larval control. 2014 and 2015 were similar. Those were three years where we used an awful lot of money. We used $6 million more than we took in in tax revenues, and that came from our reserves. However, we believed, and our commission believed, that we should deliver the services, and since we had the reserves to do it, we did deliver the services. On the other hand, by the end of 2016, our remaining reserves were below the minimum that our fund balance policy indicated we needed. So even in 2015, we knew that was a possibility, so we started working on a plan on, well, how do we get things back in balance? And it's called the Long-Term Plan. It was developed in 2016. In 2017, we decided that we wouldn't spend any more than the amount of levy monies that we took in. At that time, the budget was $1.2 million higher than the levy. So we basically, it was a de facto $1.2 million budget cut. We didn't cut the budget on paper because we thought, well, if it's another wet year, we're still going to have to provide the services and figure out how to do it. But staff came up with several different cuts in 2017 that should add up to $1.2 million. And I'll show you a map that illustrates what those cuts were because that leads into a great story in 2022 where we're going to be able to restore that. Briefly, the Long-Term Plan first had a goal to restore the reserves. Second, had a goal to restore all the services cut in 2017. And then third, sets the stage for, because development is ongoing and the district is continuing to increase in population, and the area where the majority of people live is getting bigger and bigger, we need more services. So a long-term plan to be able to figure out how do we develop those services is part of this. Here's the map I was talking about. 2016 on the left shows you the last year of full services. And the way to interpret that map is, it includes all seven counties. You can see a light gray area, which is what we call Priority Zone 1. About 95% of the people in the seven counties live in Priority Zone 1. The blue areas are larval-controlled treatment areas within Priority Zone 1, and the red areas are larval control outside of Priority Zone 1. And some of those areas are treated once a year, some are treated 20 times a year. Depends on how many mosquitoes are there. It basically shows you how much reach we had in the district. And the reason we treat around the edges of Priority Zone 1 is some mosquitoes can fly five or 10 miles. So if you treat outside, you control those mosquitoes, and they can't bother the people that are at the edges. Now you go to 2017, which was the first year of the cut, you'll notice the red's largely gone. And what our goal was, was to preserve services within Priority Zone 1 as much as possible. And if we had to cut something, it would be outside. So that's ultimately how we achieved our cuts. In 2022, because we're going to be able to restore all the services, I'm getting a little ahead of my story, but since the map is here, we should look at least like 2016 again. And now, the gray area is what Priority Zone 1 was in 2016. It's a little bit larger now that we have new census zones, including in Anoka County. It's a bit larger, and so there'll be a little bit more red in Anoka County, probably. So the story, well, staff were pretty bummed in 2017, 2018, and, I mean, they get a lot of satisfaction of delivering services. By the end of 2019, though, our reserves were back where we needed to be. So in January of 2020, we had planned to restore some of the cut services. Then COVID hits. Every county in the district told us to prepare for levy deficits. Everybody was afraid in April, May 2020, what's the economic situation going to be? How many tax delinquencies are we going to have? So we did prepare, and we were able to limit our expenditures to about $14 million. Well, at the end of 2020, it turned out the situation wasn't as dire for us as we thought it might be, so we didn't suffer a huge levy deficit. So the money we saved had been in reserves. First, well, okay, you think about, gee, you could have delivered more services. Well, that's the money that's going to enable us to deliver full services starting in 2022. What this slide shows you is the difference between our budget and our levy, starting in 2019 and going through 2026. This is according to the Long-Term Plan. And the real take-home message is, the top line is the budget, the bottom line is the levy. You'll notice by 2025, they cross over, they're essentially the same. Long ago, that's the way the district did things, and there's some history that started in 2005, 2006 that changed that, which is what caused these things to get out of whack. There was a good plan there to expand services, and that's where it came from. But we've had to deal with the fallout of that since, since 2016 especially. If you look at the difference between the budget and the levy, if we were to expand our full budget, we would have to take that difference out of reserves. That's what happened in 2014, 2015, 2016. So the idea was to get them back together, then spend as much, live within your means, in other words. The next slide, though, shows you how the savings that we achieved in 2020, because we are afraid of pandemic-related issues, can now be put to good work. Before, full services would be in 2025. Well, with those savings, we can do it starting in 2022. We still have to keep our Long-Term Plan going through 2025. But what this graph shows you is basically how the difference between the budget and the levy relates to full services. Full services is the horizontal line at $1.2 million, and the black diamonds that are slowly but surely getting closer to that $1.2 million, the difference between them and the horizontal line is basically how the difference between the budget and the levy relates to being able to deliver all the services that we cut in 2017. We saved about $1.2 million. When you add up the cost on this graph in 2022, 23, and 24, it comes to about $1.14 million. The two are so close, by taking the $1.2 million in reserves and putting that into services, we can fully restore services in 2022, which is that, after this pandemic, that was one of the best stories for our staff to be able to just, we can finally do our jobs again and feel like we can do our jobs again. So with that, I want to thank all of you who've been on our commission over the years, both this year and in previous years, because during my time as director, our commission is really pragmatic and problem-solving, and I think this is a pretty good testament of what, by working together, we've been able to achieve. We got lucky because a few years were dry, but we also had a plan, and we stuck to it. And I can't take credit for achieving this, it's really the staff who achieved it. achieving this. It's really the staff who achieved it, and achieved it in some pretty daunting circumstances. I mean, you all have had issues to deal with with the pandemic over the last couple of years as well. So with that, I also, normally Alex Carlson would be here, our Public Affairs Director. However, he had a chance to see his grandmother, whom he hasn't seen since 2019 because of the pandemic, and I told him, go for it. So I figured I'm the one he had to listen to blather on up here, so he made sure all the IT-related stuff was taken care of before he chose. So with that, I thank you very much for letting me come here today and tell you a good story. I hope you feel as good about it as I do, because this is really a good thing.
Well, thank you, Dr. Manwiler, for your presentation, and extend a thank you to your staff for their efforts to reduce our mosquito population so we can enjoy the great outdoors in our area. It's challenging to manage these pests, given their astounding numbers during our warmer months, but you and your MMCD employees adeptly use your knowledge and equipment to intervene in the mosquito lifecycle to prevent many of them from biting and possibly infecting humans and animals with disease. Good luck during the upcoming season.
Thank you very much. Likewise. Do you have any questions? I don't know how much time we have, but...
Commissioner Reiner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, it is so delightful to see you in person this morning, and congratulations. I mean, all of the numbers speak for themselves in terms of the hard work to get to full services in 2022. But I did just want to add that you talked about public education as well, and that is really also going very well and successful for you. I mean, you were really on a great chart before the pandemic, but even with the pandemic, I believe you guys put together like this great, a couple of different versions of films and put them in schools and things like that. This information, I mean, when I first got assigned to this commission, I know my family is like, great, Mandy, so you can, you can help with the pest issue, but really, it's a lot about public health. And so with the public education, I think that's really important. And I did just want to comment that you have worked really hard with that, too, and I see great improvement around that. So thank you very much for all of your work.
Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, just a quick question. My district represents some rural areas, and the maps that you showed from 2016, 17, it doesn't look like they're even getting treated. I'm more talking about township of Linwood and city of Columbus. And I do get calls periodically about, you know, their issues with mosquitoes out there, and I'm wondering, this BTI that you use, is that available to them, the public? Can the public treat their own land, or is it available from the MMCD to individuals?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Reiner, BTI is available at stores like Home Depot. It's normally available more as dunks than the granules. I don't know if someplace like Fleet Farm might have it in the granular form. There are some distributors you could get it. The district, we negotiate a special pricing and going through basically a competitive process to get that pricing. So part of that is, we're not available to distribute it to the public. The distributors want to be able to do that. But Adapco and a number of others probably could do that. I think it would be easiest if either you or if some of your constituents who want to be able to use BTI on their own would contact us and at the 645-9149 phone number, and we can give you more information, find out exactly where they are, who might be able to help them out with it.
Okay, appreciate that. And the retail BTI is same concentration that the MMCD uses?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Reiner, the dunks are actually a greater concentration, but they're not made for wetlands. If your constituents are interested in throwing them in a small pond or something in their backyard, that would be the easiest way to go. And they're long-term, so they have a larger concentration, but they, they fall apart slowly over time. So the dosage that goes in is appropriate to control mosquitoes. The granules, if you were able to get granules from a distributor, they would probably be exactly the same as us. And it's a, I believe it's about a 1% concentration.
Okay. Well, I'll follow up after this meeting then, because I'm sure as time moves on here, I'll get a few calls this spring. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reiner, Commissioner Brasshead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Stephen, and good to see you again. I enjoyed my years when I did serve on that committee. But wondering if you have any data. I always like to see measurable outcomes. So if those years that we cut the services, you know, and treatments, was there a correlated increase perhaps in disease data? Like the number of, if we cut down treatments, did disease rise? Did more people get infected or get sick? Do you have that information?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brasshead, we don't have disease-specific information for, well, it's district-wide disease rather than, say, Anoka County disease or whatever. It's hard to see patterns in any year that are county-specific. Usually, if disease is more common, it's more common throughout the district, and it's more common throughout Minnesota, and it's more common throughout larger parts of the country. On the other hand, we did go back through, well, we have a huge surveillance. That's a long-term adult mosquito surveillance. And so we looked at, what of those places existed in areas that before 2017 were getting full larval control and afterwards weren't? And how do you compare to areas that got full larval control both before and after? And we were able to see that when the larval control went away, the mosquito numbers went up. On the other hand, and we've got another area that receives no control, it's Carlos Avery. They don't allow any control. But that's useful, because you can look at, if it's a dry year or a wet year, how does that impact it? And then by comparing all three patterns, you can tease out what's due to mosquito control and what's due to other factors. When you look at disease vector mosquitoes, the main disease vectors that are covered by that data are spring mosquitoes, which are involved in Jamestown Canyon. And there are too few cases of Jamestown Canyon to say that reducing the control increased the number of cases. We might have four or five cases at the most in the district, and then half of them turn out. What the Department of Health does is interviews all the people to figure out where they're exposed in the district or elsewhere. So when you only have two or three a year that possibly were exposed in the district, it's very hard to find a statistically significant pattern. On the other hand, if you look at the potential vectors, we were able to see that the control reduced the potential vectors. So that's kind of a proxy for how you would look at disease risk. But one of our big goals is to continue to expand that early-season control, because that targets those group of mosquitoes. I hope that was a long-winded story, but you go through several different kinds of data, and it's, it's sort of like the CDC. It's, you get to a conclusion in the end, but there's just lots of things to overlay. The financial data are like that, too. I only showed you two pictures, but we've got a lot of pictures that went into creating those, too.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again, Dr. Manwiler. Your information is valuable, and as we swat less mosquitoes on our skin this summer, we'll thank you more.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Really appreciate the time. Very much appreciate the support.
Thank you. And that does conclude Chair's reports. We'll now move on to the Management Committee report, and Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my items are informational, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner West. We'll move on to the Transportation Committee report. The Transportation Committee did meet, and they brought a number of items for our attention. First, item one under Highway, the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of additional right-of-way for the construction of a grade, separated interchange and associated railroad crossing at Sunfish Lake Boulevard and US Highway 10, along with Frontage Road, Backage Road, and other associated corridor improvements along the US Highway 10 in the city of Ramsey. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion? We've seen this a number of times. No explanation necessary. So with that, the resolution's before us, and it requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes. Second, on your transportation agenda, the committee recommends approval to enter into a professional services contract with TKDA for preliminary design, environmental documentation, and final design services for the US Highway 10 Strategic Congestion Mitigation Project from Hanson Boulevard to Round Lake Boulevard in the city of Coon Rapids. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gamache. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brasshead. And further discussion? I will just say, this is often referred to as the Third Lane Project. It's adding that third lane in both directions between Hanson and Round Lake Boulevard on Highway 10 to help mitigate all the congestion that will be developed through the projects in both Anoka and Ramsey on Highway 10, to get people up to Main Street or beyond to Round Lake Boulevard, so they can get off and use some of other county roads to avoid some of that congestion. With that, there's a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye. That item passes. And then, under the Transit Department, the committee recommends approval of an amendment to the Transit Link Service Agreement between Anoka County and the Metropolitan Council for the existing dialer ride service within Anoka County. Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gamache. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
That item passes. I will mention, that item has to do with a, essentially, a pass-through contract between the Metropolitan Council and our Transit Division to increase pay for operators, transit operators, so they could hire transit operators and keep transit operators, drivers essentially. They wanted to increase pay and needed our approval to do so. This does not cost Anoka County money directly. It comes through the Metropolitan Council. And then, item four, the committee recommends approval to, of an amendment to a Transit Link Service Agreement between Anoka County and Transit Team Incorporated for the existing dialer ride service within Anoka County. This, again, is for the same reasons I mentioned on item three. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that item passes. There's a couple informational items here you can look through when you have a chance. Other than that, that concludes the main report. We'll move on to the Transportation Chair Report. We have one item there. The Chair, I recommend approval of a revised resolution approving the sale and conveyance of certain portions of county property identified as PIN number 293225240005 and PIN 293225240006, legally described in Exhibit A to the city of Ramsey for the expansion of Riverdale Drive, subject to final approval and consent of the sale by Metropolitan Council. If this looks familiar, this is a bookkeeping update, you know, cleaning up some documents, and I'm looking for an offer of this resolution.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Brasshead. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that item passes. That concludes the Transportation Chair Report, and we'll move on to the Information Technology Committee Report, and we'll turn to Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The IT Committee met on Tuesday, March 1, and we had just informational items that came before us regarding a discussion on the IT projects and the related funding sources, which we also got an update yesterday in our workshop. So that information has been processed to all the county commissioners, and it's just laying things out as we move forward on what projects are coming up and how we're going to fund them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. And while your mic is hot, let's move to the Parks Committee report.
All right. The Parks Committee also met on March 1. We were at the Archery Building at Bunker Hills Regional Park, and we had an opportunity to actually see some of the people that were there, shooting their different bows and other apparatuses that don't even really look like bows anymore, but it's pretty amazing to watch these guys. The committee had two action items. They could be recommended to the county board to adopt Resolution 2022PRK03, supporting a master plan amendment for a facility exchange and minor boundary adjustments at Mississippi River Regional Park. This is the area right off of 60, or excuse me, of Highway 10. And what we are doing is, we have to go to a master plan amendment to get this approved, and the committee's asking for the board to do that. It's a land swap of 3,000 acres, I think. It's not that many acres. How much, what was the acreage on that, Jeff?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good morning. Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County, and it's 3.65 acres.
Thank you. I was reading the small print on the screen, and I...
A little different.
A little different. Yeah. I obviously need to get my eyes checked and get some stronger glasses here. But so, and it's a good swap. It's to help with a road project for a service road off of, off of Highway 10 in the road construction. And in the, what we're going to be able to do, hopefully with the Met Council, is to get dollars to add a trail that will be used that comes off of our parking lot. But Jeff Perry, Parks Director is here. He can answer any questions. But Jeff, you want to give a brief overview? This Mississippi West Park, for those who have not been there yet, the regional park out there, it's a beautiful park, and it's got some great access to the Mississippi River for sight. And also, there's a boat ramp where you can put your boat in, your canoes in, and things. And it's just a fantastic view, both in the winter and in the spring, summer, and fall. But it's just a beautiful place. If you get a chance, we're working on more trails, and that's making a loop trail through this system, so it's not an ending one. And this will help us do that. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is kind of a win-win project. It's a very important transportation project for the county. It's the trunk Highway 10 interchange with Ramsey Boulevard, which will safely keep moving people along Highway 10 as they proceed north or south along the Highway 10 corridor. So the Transportation Division needs to essentially acquire 3.65 acres as part of this project, so they can safely build the project. And the benefit of that is a new trail that will be built. So whenever parkland is conveyed or used for other purposes, it either needs to be replaced with like parkland or a like park facility. We did take a look across the system to see if there were other acquisitions that might be out there. We didn't find any that fit that, that need at the moment. Therefore, we just used the market rate, market valuation of the property, which was 175,000. So we'll take that 175,000 proceed and complete a nice trail loop at Mississippi West Regional Park. So again, Mr. Chair members, this is a great transportation project with some great benefit to build some new trail at Mississippi West Regional Park.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Jeff, is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Resolution is adopted. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee recommended to the county board the approval of a purchase of service agreement with Anoka County Contract C0009093 with the Conservation Corps of Minnesota in the amount not to exceed $120,000 to assist with natural resources restoration and park maintenance-related projects in the Anoka County parks system. We have been working with the Corps for many years, a couple decades, I believe it has been now. And they do a great job. They offer a lot of help to our staff in doing some of this work, and it pays off for us every year. So we just are going to ask for the approval of another contract for 2022. And I'll move that.
There is a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassid.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes.
We had a few additional informational items. One, I'll let Jeff talk a little bit about, give the details. But we have some planned improvements to the Bunker Hills Dog Park, which, Jeff, if you want to update us as to how we got here and what we're planning to do and how we're going to work with the cities of Andover and Coon Rapids.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a joint project at Bunker Hills Dog Park, very heavily-used dog park. As you may recall, we operate that dog park under a joint powers agreement between Anoka County, City of Andover, and City of Coon Rapids. And currently, it's not ADA accessible. So we went to work, negotiated some economies of scale to get some paving done at the dog park and put that onto the city of Andover's road reconstruction, annual resurfacing project. So we came up with a very reasonable cost. The Parks Department planning team did the design, and the construction estimate is $115,000. And what that includes, it paves the entire parking lot, the transition into the dog park, into both the large dog area and small dog area, and then an entire bituminous trail loop around the perimeter of the large dog park area. So some very valuable, accessible improvements to Bunker Hills Dog Park. I think that will be valued and appreciated by many members of the public. So we are poised and ready to go with this project. It'll be bid out as part of Andover's program here this spring and be built sometime this summer. So very much looking forward to this project.
And we do appreciate the agreement and the relationship we have with both cities. They have helped us out, and they've brought some ideas, and they've helped us out in paying for some of those ideas as well, including lights at the park and things like that. So that relationship is working very well. We had a couple other informational items that just came before us to talk about deer management program for the park system for next fall, when the hunting season comes around, and we'll get more of an update later on for that. Then we can report on that later. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamash. That'll bring us to item nine on our agenda, where we'll consider approving the following relating to the appropriations for 2022 Memorial Day observances. There are items A, B, and C. We'll take them all together. A is appropriating pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 375.35, $200 to each post of a recognized military service persons, organization, or society organized and existing in the county, holding charter from Congress or incorporated in this state for defraying the expenses of Memorial Day exercises, which submits a written request to county administration by December 31st of 2022. And then, item B is reimbursing pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 375.34, expenses up to $200 to any military service persons, organization, or society holding charter from Congress or incorporated in this state, which exists outside the county but holds Memorial Day services in the county, not to exceed a total reimbursement of $1,000, and which submits a statement in writing by December 31st of 2022 detailing the expenses incurred in such services. And then, lastly, item C, appropriating pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 375.34, up to $2,500 to the Anoka County Veterans Council to aid in the observance of Memorial Day. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of nine, A, B, and C.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brassid and a second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassid.
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. And that concludes our business for the county board meeting for today. Thank you all.